We have six members present and Steve is on the Zoom connection. We don't have any conference. It's a one item agenda and I'll give you a heads up right now, we're not even gonna get to that. I probably just table it though. For those of you who weren't at the meeting last night, we had an agenda item to appoint our new town manager, but it failed to either be defeated or be passed because we were down one member and ended up in a three-three scale name. So that means that we have to reschedule the consideration of that vote at another time. Our original intention was to do it right now, which is why we put out the notice from the meeting and why all the people are here because we saw that notice. A couple of members have expressed unease about meeting because it's so close to the last meeting and ideally we tried to give at least several days advance notice of the meeting. There is provision in state law where select board may have an emergency meeting and we give notice that is several days, it can be a few hours. We gave notice to the press last night at nine thirty and I'll see you getting those this morning around eight thirty in the morning. So that meets the standard of the law, but and even though we got more people to help them, we should probably do it for a meeting. We have some reservations about is it too early to have the meeting? It comes down to you can have a have an emergency town meeting with less notice. I guess the question is, is we feel this is an emergency because we all feel a sense of urgency to move forward with that vote because we have a candidate for the town manager position that's hanging out on a limb waiting for us to do this. I did contact that individual this afternoon and she understands what our intention is now, which we think in the interest of as much as critical perils as we can provide, we were thinking of postponing tonight's action on the town manager position until Monday night. We already have a public hearing scheduled at six thirty to go over the proposed budget for next year. Our intention would be to have that from six thirty to seven thirty and then immediately launch it to the special meeting, which would have one item on it, which is whether we wish to rescind the vote from last night and have a new vote to consider the appointment of the manager. Is John Pottle our attorney there? I would ask you to connect him. Hey, John, can you hear me?
Right, can you hear you? Yes, thank you, John.
Okay, John, do you want us to explain the difference to the select board and members of the public who are here? The difference between reconsidering a motion and rescinding a motion and how the motions to do so are different, varying according to that which category you fall in?
Yeah, it's, it's, it gets into, you know, kind of, I'll call it technical parliamentary rules or just simply, you know, rules of procedure. And oftentimes, boards, committees, you know, will look to, for example, Roberts Rules of Order, that's a very typical source, if you will, on those types of rules of procedures. Modern rules of procedure are also another one, those are the two you hear mostly. But in terms of if you have, if you want to use the word revisit a prior vote on a question, and there may be a variety of reasons that you would want to revisit a prior vote. The, the two most used motions are either a motion to reconsider, as you just mentioned, or, or a motion to rescind. And the distinction between those two, a lot of time relates frankly just to timing. If you're in the same meeting, let's say you had a vote at the beginning of a meeting and then later on during that same meeting, that's when you often would have a motion to reconsider. Same meetings going on. For those motions to reconsider, it has to be made by someone on the prevailing side, seconded, and you debate it. Then if it passes, then you move to the next step of reconsidering that particular motion. If, if the motion that's desired to be revisited is not at the same meeting, but at a separate, a different meeting, that more typically would be a motion to rescind, which any member could make that motion. You would want, if the, all members of the select board are there, you need a majority. If not all members were there and there wasn't advanced notice, you would need like a two-thirds vote. The, the effect is essentially the same if, if those motions pass. A rescindment would mean, well, we didn't, we're rescinding the prior action or in this case it was a tie vote, it's kind of a failed motion. And then if the board so choose, you would take up the item again. So the practical outcome of both is effectively the same. The distinction is more of timing, who makes the motion, et cetera, just from a pure process standpoint. So here, as I understand it, if there is a potential desire to revisit, I'll use that word again, a tie vote that happened at last night's meeting, because last night's meeting wasn't continued or adjourned to another day, really wouldn't be a continuation of that same meeting. You'd be at a separate meeting. So in a technical sense, you know, if, if the board did that, I would just go for the motion to rescind. Again, the outcome, if that motion passes, is in my view practically the same, you're just taking up the same matter to see if there can be a definitive vote one way or the other. And, and to me, that makes some sense because when you have a tie vote, the, generally speaking, whether it's a board or committee, be encouraged to try to see if you can break the tie, for lack of a better phrase. Sometimes there is no tie that can be broken, obviously that's in a, the members that are voting at that time. But that's, that's one of the things the law encourages is, is you have tie votes, we'll see if there may not be a tie vote. There's just different procedural ways to do that, again, depending on whether it's in the same meeting or whether it's in a different meeting. So I know that can sound kind of highly technical, but it's really just to provide pathways for boards to take up subject matter as they may choose to do so, and then you can go through the process of debating those, voting on them up or down, et cetera. So hopefully that's helpful.
Yeah, so if I could summarize, if we meet Monday night, that would not be a continuation of last night's meeting, it would be a new separate meeting. Attorney Pottle's recommendation is that we would then entertain a mo- a motion to rescind the tie vote from last night and take a new vote on the appointment of the town manager. If all seven members are here, all we need is a majority vote for three. If there's anybody missing, has to be two thirds of those present, is that right?
Well, it, it depends on if, if the potential rescindment or the motion itself is notified to the full board in advance, then it would be a majority vote. But if you didn't have that advance notice to the, to the board, here the select board, you'd want that two-thirds majority, if not everyone was present. If everyone is present, then you, you don't have that issue either way.
So right now, the agenda that we have that I'll see you compared does have a recall for a motion to rescind the, the failed vote from last night. And that would, anyone could make that motion and then a simple majority would hold sway?
If, as long as everyone's present and I see that everyone is, that, that would be correct. The same would be true on, on, on Monday evening, if that was the pleasure of the board to, you know, table the item to them.
Is that a distinction? It's, I know as John said, it's very legal, right? But there is a distinction there. Questions, yeah?
Well, I understand what you said, John. The two thirds versus majority is regarding the motion itself to rescind, correct?
Correct. Yeah, and, and it's always whether it's reconsideration or rescind, depending on the votes on those, it would always be a two-step process. So if, if it was, if the motion to rescind passed, then it, it, then you would be, it's just a clean procedural way to take up the prior question and motion again, you would still make the same motion that had the tie vote or a similar one. Same thing with the motion to reconsider. The motion to reconsider was approved, pretend you're at the same meeting, then you would again go to step two, which is, okay, now let's go back to the question that we're reconsidering and see which way the board may decide to vote on that. So think, think of a reconsideration motion or a motion to rescind as, it's kind of like a, a, a gatekeeper vote procedurally to then potentially get to the substantive question that you're either seeking to revisit, you're seeking to revisit. Those are just two procedural ways to do so.
And as John mentioned, if, if we do the motion to reconsider, then if the motion has to be made by someone who voted against the motion last night, which would be Joel or, or Tracy or Jane, a motion to rescind, anyone could make that motion. So that's the distinction.
And I also understood you to say that normally a motion to reconsider would be within the same meeting, like at the end, there's a realization that we gained more information or something and we want to reconsider the vote that we just took.
That, that's correct. I mean, you know, you, I would always say you look at the specific circumstances. So a lot of times I'll use a very different context. It might be a planning board reviewing an application and it's really continuation of that review in those meetings. So a reconsideration at a later meeting is really part of the same continued meeting on that application. Here, what's a little different, as I understand it, was that, you know, the, the meeting that the select board had last night, it wasn't continued, you know, it was basically adjourned, you were done that meeting as you would typically do. So, you know, this is a new meeting, for lack of a better phrase, and you know, Monday you have a different meeting on the public hearing, for example. So that's why, you know, I would say the motion to rescind would be more proper, you know, following Roberts Rules of Orders, just because it's, depends on whether you're in the same meeting or if you're in a different meeting.
Yeah, and that would have to be a two-thirds approval of the board?
O- o- only if prior notice of the motion to rescind is not provided. And not everyone is there. So if everyone's there, it's just majority because everyone is there.
All right, no. So we won't, we certainly will put the, the notice that that's our intent and if, if everyone's here, then we just need a simple majority. I think everyone is here.
Um, Jonathan, I just have a what-if question. For example, if we were voting on the issue tonight, it's my understanding that our current charter, because it's seven, eight years now, excludes electronic participation. So obviously, we can't pull the charter and erase it. So how would that be handled?
I, I'd have to double check, but I think the charter does allow for telephonic or electronic means of participation, so long as it's consistent with whatever the rules, procedures that the board may have. I think there is a remote participation policy, but I'm using my recollection on that specific charter provision. And I can look it up really quickly, but I believe that was, that was in there. That was some time ago, but that was updated.
It, it's seven years old, so there was no use of, of Zoom. So can we interpret that electronic means include Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, so we understand the legal distinctions. I mean, it'll make it a lot easier if everyone just showed up in person Monday. If everybody just shows up in person on Monday, anyone can make the motion, we said, we'll have a vote, that a simple majority will allow us to take a second motion to appoint the town manager of our choosing. And we can do that, no one can say that we're rushing into this and abusing the emergency of meeting authority, which is in state statute. So, so as long as we all have the same background, we've heard it directly from the voice of our attorneys, so I would say the motion that we need tonight would be to table the consideration of the town manager's appointment and take that up at our next meeting, which we will have at, after the public hearing on Monday. So that will be approximately seven thirty, Monday, March thirty first.
Well, I'll move to table, the motion before us. Until March thirty first at seven thirty.
Second?
Any questions? Everybody understand that one?
So, so will open session be part of just the budget hearing?
The hearing is, is, of course, the whole, the whole purpose of that would have, have like some, have a public, kind of a public hearing. So, yeah, that would, so that would, we'd have the, the public hearing on that, people would ask questions about the budget, it'd be a, some kind of handout, I'll see, I'm sure that people, you have to guide people through. And then after that, and after people have no more questions, then we would go into our select board only meeting, just to take up this one.
Okay, so there's no open session for that talk?
For the, for our meeting? Well, what I, what I've done today is had the open session following the end of this discussion. We can, with a similar one item agenda, you know, I'm not sure, do we need two public sessions for that or? We, we can. Yeah. All right. We'll have a public session before and after next Monday for that. All right, so the motion has been made to table until March thirty first? All votes in favor? Steve?
No, yes, so yes.
Oh, we do roll call?
We will.
You're really loud, Steve.
I can barely hear you.
Or he could give the peace sign or thumbs up or anything.
Yeah, I heard, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Sydney, okay, so that's seven to nothing. We'll both table this until Monday. Okay, moving on, does anybody in the audience have any comments or questions from the public?
I have a question.
Yes, now.
Why was there voting if there was somebody missing? Like, why did that even happen?
Well, we have, you, you can vote when you have a quorum, and we certainly had a quorum, we had six out of seven.
So I thought it was just said everybody had to be here for a vote?
No. No, I said at our meet, at our meeting Monday on March thirty first, and we hopefully will have a second vote. It makes it easier if everyone is there in person without, you know, hybrid, some people here in person, on the Zoom in terms of just getting the vote done easily. But, you know, people occasionally miss meetings because they have actual jobs besides service on the select board. Steve has, is a busy man and has to go to Massachusetts for work, that's why I wasn't here last night. Other questions? Yes, sir.
Robert Olsowski. Been a lot of talk about this person that you're apparently want to appoint to town managers in town. We've had a lot of issues with our past town manager funneling millions of dollars to the chairman of the board of the selectmen, board members getting money for their own personal interests and their nonprofits. These type of issues need to be addressed. We don't need another selectman or a town manager that's going to go along with this whole mess. What is the issues with this person and why are our board members resistant to appoint that person?
Well, first of all, you're making unsubstantiated allegation about the previous town manager, who's no longer with us and the.
Well, he did get two million dollars to the chairman of the board.
That's your perception of reality, Mr. Olsowski, and unfortunately it's not the truth.
Pardon me?
I think that's your perception of reality.
I have the reports that indicate that.
Well, again, your perception of reality.
What are the issues with the person that we're attempting to appoint to this position?
Well, I mean, we could, the two people that voted, the three people that voted against it, speak for themselves on that. If you want, sorry. But I don't, I don't have any issue with the candidate at all. I think we're lucky to have someone, but go ahead.
How appropriate is it to be talking personally?
It's not appropriate at all to talk about candidates and, and human resources issues. So that's not something we should comment on.
So we shouldn't comment where there's been past conduct in other municipalities by the same person, but we're willing to accept them into our community, knowing that these problems existed?
We're not aware of any existing problem with this individual. She has sterling references and background check, that is checked, yeah. Any other comments, members of the public?
Yes, John, firstly, first I want to thank John for clarifying, you know, the procedures because I, you know, like a lot of people were confused on that.
And you haven't gone to law school, right?
No, 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 I, I, I like to know the procedures. I'll thank, if he was explaining that, you guys will be able to do that. The only comment I have really is qualifications. There, there are qualifications in a town manager that can't be measured in metrics. They can't put data on them, you can't put numbers on them. These are, these are things like are they a peopled person, are they going to, you know, I think Trampus King, I think that, leave, walk in the street, you're shoveling old ladies driveway, you're out there plowing a truck like the Greenfield Town Manager. Those, those are things you can't, you can't measure. It's hard to even ask questions because it's part of somebody's being, you know, they, they exude that. So those are the type of qualifications we also need to look at as a town, not just you're educated or you run five towns. I mean, we need, this town needs somebody who can bring people together at the table. It needs somebody who's got a laser-focused vision on the future of the town, somebody that I can work with, my group can work with, somebody that people can trust, build that trust, you know, can be, be a unifier. And that's what we need in this town right now. We, we don't need somebody who's an Einstein, we need somebody who's a unifier, somebody who can get all these people behind me focused on moving this town forward, getting us in the same room and around a table like this, like the committees I'm talking about. That's, that's one way to do that. You get more public input. We need a unifier in this town, we need that as a candidate. That needs to be the person running this town. They can unify these people, bring us together. That's all I have, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr., we have another person raising a, we, we want to get, everyone who wants to talk and can't talk, we want to recognize anybody else for a second time, yeah.
Just, just a question, what is the due process? What's your name? I'm sorry, Holly Kishbaugh.
Okay.
What's your due process with hiring a town manager? Or I guess with any, we're going to speak about the town manager. Backgrounds, reaching out to other towns to see how they did as town manager, but not only how they did as town manager, but after they left, did you find any discrepancies? Because, you know, of course with audits and discrepancies, a lot of times the mud doesn't come to the surface, so somebody leaves. So what's the, the due process of hire?
I'll explain that to you. First of all, we contracted with Maine Municipal Association, HR consultancy to help us manage a search process. The consultant from Maine Municipal reviewed what we were looking for in a town manager, including some of the things that Sean was talking about. It's not just educational credentials, it's, it's previous experience as, as a municipal leader, the person has over ten years' experience there, does have the educational credentials, has credentials as a town manager, deputy elector, treasurer, general assistance administrator, certified managing officer, all that stuff. After we identified a match between what we're looking for and the person's background, the MMA consultant had an initial interview with that person to make sure that they checked out and, and was a good fit for us. The next step was, this board had an interview with, with all the candidates that reached that step, and if we decided to go forward with that person as a candidate, we brought them to Dover Fox Trot for a full day visit to the town, where they met with all the department heads, toured all the work sites in the municipality for town government, from, you know, Public Works to the wastewater treatment plant, fire station, police station, town office, everything. After that, we had another meeting with the individual here as a select board. When we got to the point, if we, if we found a match, which we did with the person we're, we're proposing as our next town manager, then it's negotiating a potential employment contract, we've done that. All that's left now is to take the final vote, which we will hopefully do on, on Monday. In addition, once we've made an offer to someone, we check all their references and Maine Municipal Association did that.
And I think that's where maybe I didn't specify clearly enough. Specifically, do you or the MMA, does somebody specifically reach out to the towns?
Yeah.
They, they do?
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
They did that and, and got very good references in addition to that.
And they did that recently?
Yes. In addition to that, we do a full, complete background check that looks at, you know, any verified educational completion, talk to, you know, financial reports on their individual finances, any criminal history or anything like that. So it's very comprehensive.
I, I work for, for a town where she was just, she just left as town manager.
Yeah, well, she, she was.
But that we were not contacted.
She was most recently in Corinna, yeah, for five years. Yes, Sandy?
Sandy Perkins, I just want to kind of follow up on something Sean said. I, I have no question about how this was conducted and the people that you talked to, I, I'm sure that that was all fine. I guess my concern would be at a time when we have so many things going on in Dover Fox Trot, we have a big budget increase, we have this issue with the dam, we have the villages project, we have all this stuff going on. Is that really the time to bring in a town manager where three of your seven select board members chose to not vote for them? And so, I, I mean, I understand the rules and if you guys come together on Monday and four to three say, go for it, that's how it goes, I just feel like this is the time when maybe it would be really good if you had somebody coming in that everybody was excited.
Let me respond directly to that. That the three of the board members voted not to move ahead with the appointment last night is not indicative that all three of those members are against this candidate. And it was more of a procedural question, that they wanted to look at some other issues about what the to-do list would be for this individual coming in for the first six months. So, I mean, Joel and Tracy, you're perfectly capable of, you know, representing your own views on that. You did not vote against the candidate because you don't, and she did a good job, and in fact, you had previously recommended that she be the one that we appointed, so. Take it wherever you want to go, if you wanted, if you've changed your mind since last night or whatever.
Yeah, it was just the procedural part of it. I felt like we were putting a cart before the horse. So I would like to have that piece in place. So that's clear when she starts day one.
Yeah, which we, I'll jolt that.
Right, so, so last night, as been said, there's a lot to bring in someone into a town that has as many, we'll just call them issues that we're trying to deal with. And, and you're all right. We have been diligently trying to find someone that fits the boxes we need. Those of you that don't, go online and look, it's hard to find people to work in towns now. A lot of them are struggling to find anybody to fill any job. So one of the things to set someone for success in any industry is ensuring that if they're coming into a system, there is a very thorough checklist and guideline of the things that you have identified that are priorities, things that we need them to hopefully get on right away. And that was why actually the two of us said no, is because we hadn't had time to get that document done yet. And I felt like that was absolutely crucial, that at least we had something moving forward on that, so that if we're going to bring somebody in, even if it's a local person or someone from away, we're not just saying, good luck, I'll see you next week. And they're staying there wondering what they just got themselves sent to. That's not fair to them or the town, definitely not to any of you who pay taxes, I'm not okay doing it. So we've identified that that is moving forward and there's going to be a very comprehensive six-month plan basically on, here's the projects, here's the things that need to be updated, questions of that, and working with the committees. Now that that's being addressed, I, I think next week we have the opportunity to give someone a chance to make things happen in a way that's going to actually benefit everybody in the way that we hope it will.
Good?
Again, as I said, stayed at the meeting, I voted no, and I'll read it again. I believe the select board needs to continue its work in looking further for a better fit, considering the size of our town as well as upcoming needs of Dover Fox Trot.
Yeah.
Point it back, the, the board's recommendation of six to one consensus change was in the minority. It was a six to one decision to go forward with the candidates that we addressed last night. to go forward with the candidates that we addressed last night, so.
And and I would say thank you very much for that explanation, because as you can see, the fact that that wasn't clear left the entire town of Dover thinking, what are those guys doing?
Well, it left it left half of the select board wondering the same question.
It's fun just saying that that how quickly miscommunication happens, because that's how we all came.
And let me just say, those that don't know me outside of this role, accountability is a very big thing for me. And I can say it loud and clear that if you're going to work for this town in any capacity, as long as I'm sitting here, you're going to do your job. There's not going to be sitting around. We have work to do, and that's every dollar that is spent on you and training and supporting the town is used adequately. Um so I hope no one thinks that it's a cushy ride working for the town because they work hard. Um and we want to make sure that they're supported enough that they sit here and we get, you know, the skills and time and wisdom from them. Um because I know a lot of you said, you know, we've got people doing this for twenty, thirty years. They know a lot. They absolutely do. Um and I want to make sure that we support the right team.
Jane?
Deborah Stelling, the question to Joel, the document that you're talking about for this during that six month probationary time, is this like a clear cut of what your expectations are and what you expect, whether the individual is, to accomplish during that period of time?
Yes.
Accomplish?
Well, in some places it's accomplished and some of it's what they're needing to work on. But you would expect some things to be achieved during that time period.
It's it's a set of priorities to work on versus.
I'm just, I'm, I know what you're talking about, accountability, and there's a clear set. I mean, I've been in a lot of positions where you have it and you're in that six months and sorry, you know, you're not quite making it, that's.
Well, and and there's a learning curve to that as well. People have to learn a system and there's a lot we we don't know. They get in and they update us. And so there is flex in these things because we find that this has to have X, Y, and Z done, and we have to do these other things to do that. So but that's part of getting the understanding and getting someone that can do that.
I understand they need the appropriate training and they'll get it and get it, but there's a certain amount of expectation that training has to.
Of course, yes.
So and you know, we're, we have to schedule a meeting, a special meeting of this for either next week. I've heard next week myself. We have a meeting on Monday night for the public hearing and the continuation of this topic.
Yes.
And and then on Wednesday, there was a, there was a pine test meeting that Steve's called, so. Um I don't know what everybody's schedules are next week, but Tuesday and Thursday are open on my calendar. Um or we could push it into the following week, and we would have a special meeting held executive session just to go through the list and and agree on uh what the priorities for the new town manager would be during during that first six months probationary.
I'd like to do it next week.
Tuesday, uh even though it's on April Fool's Day, I don't have a problem. Is that okay?
Yeah, what I think about that is we're working, would be working on um a set of priorities. I'm not sure that needs to be an executive session.
Well, it's the, it's the work plan for um for the the town manager. If you don't, you know, wouldn't be, yeah, I mean, it's, you might not need an executive. But that's up to, you know, whether you feel it does or not.
Perhaps when we gather on April Fool's Day, we could determine what are the parameters of the work that you're doing? And if we're going to be talking specifically about the individual?
Yeah.
And that individual's um work plan, then that that's different than um you know, the work plan.
Right, it would be kind of hard not to talk about the candidate.
I can't do Tuesday. All right.
Uh Thursday?
I'm hoping Thursday.
Oh, you got the day after Thursday, okay.
Change that.
Wait a second, Mr. Olsowski, we're having a discussion.
I didn't say anything, did I?
No, you got your hand up though.
Oh, wow.
I'll get to you as soon as we finish this item, okay? So it, so is next week not possible? We will.
Uh Thursday, I think we need Thursday.
Thursday, April third. Thursday. Oh, is that ready? What time? Five fifteen. Then you probably would go past. All right, how about the following?
How about Monday, Saturday?
Monday to Saturday? All right, that okay?
Yeah.
It's.
Not nothing to do with the day. I just want just with Sandy, can I say addressing Sandy's bit of the today and the twenty four hours of information and how everybody's much happier right now because they've heard the concerns, it was more procedure than person. But sometimes being a little inexperienced and sitting up here and we had gone into executive session, we had learned some of this stuff, but some stuff's confidential. So you take confidentiality and you move on towards going to work for a ten hour day. And then you find out the world's exploded. Um it is just there was no way we could stop what happened on social media today without it and so formally doing it now. I mean, it's part of the, I'm good.
Okay, so we have the April seventh, Monday at six thirty would be um special meeting to talk about the probationary. Um while I have, Mr. Olsowski was very patient.
I know he was.
I want to get back to you.
Go ahead.
Oh, want to let her go first?
My name is Karen Kelsey, and um my concern is we know that she worked for the town of Corinna. She worked for Bradford and she worked for Sangerville. And they're much smaller towns than Dover Foxcroft. So what were some of her accomplishments that, you know, she did for that town?
Yeah, well, the main accomplishment in.
And I mean, it looked like, I'm sorry, I'm just going to say, it looked like she spent, you know, short amounts of time at each one, I think like two years.
Well, everyone spends a certain amount of time in San.
I am. Oh, I definitely understand that. And then honestly, today on social media, when I was looking on my lunchtime seeing social media, it didn't seem like people in the town of Dover are very supportive moving forward of her taking the position. So I think like, you know, as select board, you will represent your constituents, people in the town, and that should take some precedence of maybe it's not the right fit for the town. Maybe she is not the right candidate. Um and maybe where is is it moving forward just picking her because you feel like you're running out of time?
No, no.
That was my question.
Our job, the the town manager is the only position that the select board hires directly. We have spent the last five months on the search process, looking at multiple candidates. We feel very comfortable that Lois Jones is the best we've found. We're not taking someone just to fill an empty chair. I I I don't have any control over what people think about someone, and I don't even know how they formed an opinion on someone that may maybe they have not met. But she has outstanding references that we checked in on and and just, uh, you know, highly thought of in Corinna, the major thing that she did was uh find the funds to build the brand new fire station in that community at no cost to the town. So that's a a major accomplice accomplishment. And she did a, you know, a lot of other stuff in the town manager.
It was a grant, right? That was a grant.
Yeah, but you have to get the grant and then manage the whole project too. So it's almost, it's almost a two million dollar project. So um I think that uh but a major request of people is don't prejudge someone you have.
I don't like to prejudge. I really don't, but.
Give them a chance to prove themselves and and work with them. That's all we ask you to do. Yes, Mary?
We are no others. And I lived in Sangerville when she was there, and I was not happy with the way she handled it. And what I've heard from some of my friends in Corinna, they didn't even know that she left. So, I mean, did you all? I mean, I know you said that somebody else checked all the, you know, everything. Did you all like go to the towns and ask?
Who knows around the municipal building? No.
Well.
Go ahead, Jane.
Just a procedural question. Are we allowing non-residents to speak?
Are you a resident of Dover Foxcroft?
Yes, I am. I said I used to live.
I don't know where you live now, so I was just asking. I was just asking a procedural question.
Yeah, but I thought it, whatever.
All right.
Anyways, I just think that there should be some more investigation before because I really don't want to see this town get taken down.
No one does that. And we we have everyone wants this to be a successful transition. And uh we we feel confident in the candidate we have brought. Yes, Mr. Olsowski, thank you very much.
Is the road commissioner the town manager? Again, is that what's going to happen?
The top, the road commissioner's responsibilities are part and parcel of the town management, yes.
Is that normal?
Yes, it is.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Joel, I had talked with you a while ago. It was indicated to me that town manager Flukie was over his head and didn't have the expertise or knowledge in the road building industry to make the decisions he was making and directing our public works. We now know from the reports, CSW poll reports that the material was failing that was put up into these big stockpiles. Normally what you would do when you're making your materials is make a hundred ton small pile. Tracy probably is familiar with this. You test your material. You have an evaluation done, and then you proceed with what you're told to do by the testing facility to make your material meet specifications. The problems we have on our roads is horrendous. That's keep putting material that's failing over material that's failing. And this is a problem. It costs the taxpayers a huge amount of money. The continued maintenance, the accidents, I received a report from the PV that indicates there's one thousand eight hundred and eighty six accidents in Dover Foxcroft in ten years, which attributes to a hundred and eighty eight point six a year. That's one accident every other day, three times the national average. Our overdose rate in Dover Foxcroft is three times the national average. Our cancer rate in Dover Foxcroft is three times the national average, the highest in the state. And the MS rate is three times the national average. But what is our town manager's requirements? What are their qualifications to address the issues that are costing our people's lives? Our roads are one of the top priorities, according to the SW, I mean, the Town of Richmond report, I think I believe gave Terry, you guys. Why are we ignoring our roads? The dam all of a sudden became a big project, a big thing in the town. It's not causing anybody's deaths. But in the past two years, we've had seven deaths on our roads in Dover Foxcroft. And we're not addressing our roads.
To say that we're not addressing our roads, given the hundreds of thousands of dollars we spend on them every year, is absurd. I know that's an obsession for your, we do not.
You interrupted, okay, look, look.
Do you have a point to make, sir?
We we do spend money, but we're spending money ignorantly. We're putting failing material down that's causing the restrictions of emergency services in our community. Instead of dressing one mile of road at a time, fixing the issues, asking for a little bit of help and assistance, so we're making good decisions in the interest of the taxpayers. Why are we doing what we keep doing? We keep repeating what we do over and over and over again, thinking, well, we're doing something that's good when it's failing. Look at Garland's roads. Go drive Oliver Hill Road.
Mr. Olsowski, we're talking about a candidate for Dover Foxcroft town manager. We're not talking about Garland's roads.
I have a first amendment right to speak to.
But it doesn't go forever, Mr. Olsowski.
It's not forever.
Okay, it just seems like it's going on forever.
You have to give me a chance to speak.
Go on.
Go look at Oliver Hill Road, and that will give you an example of what the Garland town manager's idea is as a road commissioner.
Thank you. Jane?
Okay, number one, I respect the process that we used. And I have shared my concerns with my peers on this board that are held in confidence because that is part of our process. And again, I stand by my statement. We have worked hard, I won't dare tell you the number of hours and the stack of papers we have gone through. So again, I am stating, we have worked hard with this process. But I'm sorry, but we have more work to do, in my opinion. And I am one of seven. And we have a vote on Monday. And unfortunately, we have a protection meeting at six o'clock here, so.
Yeah, we have to.
Clarifying.
All right, so I'm going to close the public comment section. I've already commented from the select board. Oh, excuse me, Steve, but thank you for, you don't have eyes on the sidewalk. Yes, good to see you.
Can you guys hear me?
He's uh.
Can you? Can you raise your audio on your end?
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
What?
Go ahead.
We have the technology.
So uh just to to the the citizens out there, I would like you to are unsure.
Steve, can you call in? Can you call in? Because we can't, we can't hear you. Can you hear?
Yeah, okay. I think technology.
Or bring your phone away from me.
It's his side.
There we go. How about that? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say to the people who are are being uh voicing concerns because the candidate that we've chosen doesn't have one hundred percent of everybody in the entire world thinking that she's the best person. I mean, I don't think that there's anybody out there that has a one hundred percent approval rate from even from family members. So just because somebody has a beef with somebody doesn't mean that that is what we should focus on. And it it is, people should give uh the new town manager benefit of the doubt and a chance to prove themselves. And um just like they would want to have other people do to them. So uh just want to leave it there.
Thank you, Steve. Other comments from select board members? Hearing none? We are finished. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you. David, are you okay with adjourning?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.